And, okay, now we're recording.
All right.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission for the Town Mechanist Order. First item on the agenda is the Fastinger Farms Development Review. Lot and block 610-A-128/1280 Fastinger Lane. Are we going to listen to the developer first? Is that the idea?
Yes, so Ed, I just sent you a microphone request and please let me know who else you want on screen.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. You want me to go? Am I okay?
Well, so we've got Graham Ferry as well and Mike, if I say it right, Seedorf, Sador? Are those both your guys?
Yes.
Okay, do you want them unmuted and on camera?
Definitely unmuted. I don't know if they want to be on camera. They're not the best looking guys.
That's up to them if they want to be on camera. Okay, I sent them all microphone requests. You guys are all, you're all hot mic'd now. All right, do you want me to go ahead and screen share that document you sent me earlier?
You could, yeah, if you want to pull it up, you could just pull up the color rendering. I think that's probably the easiest plan to talk to.
Okay. And I will get that up and then you can take it away. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, we're good. We good, RJ?
You're good to go.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ed Moore and I'm with Scheffler and Company. Also with me tonight is Graham Ferry from Scheffler and Michael Seedorf is with Miranda Home. So hopefully between the three of us, we can answer any questions you folks might have. The reason why we're here tonight is to present the preliminary final plans for the Fastinger Farms Plan, answer any questions and hopefully get your final approval recommendation for the Town Council. I'll just give a quick overview of the project. As you can see, it's not a very complicated one, but I'll just give you some of the key bullet points and then we'll open it up to questions. The property, I'm sure everyone knows, is located at the corner of Broad Meadow Drive and Fastinger Lane. It's approximately 11.3 acres in size. It's zoned R2 and 1 and 2 family residential zoning is permitted. These will all be single-family homes. There are several existing structures on the property. Those will all be removed from the property itself. The project consists of, as you can see, a single street with a cul-de-sac. The street length is approximately 850 lineal feet. There are 17 proposed single-family lots and the maximum grade on the street that we're looking at is probably around 6%, so it's relatively flat for our area. The minimum lot area that we're proposing is almost 13,000 square feet. The required minimum lot area is about 12,000 square feet. So as you can see, all the lots are larger than the minimum. The minimum lot width will be 90 feet. As you can see from the plan too, on the very left, there's a stormwater management basin. That basin will be constructed. It's been designed to handle the increase in stormwater runoff. It's not considered, it won't be intended as a wet basin, so it will de-water within 72 hours of a rainfall event. There would be no mailboxes at the individual homes. There's a mailbox cluster right near the stormwater management basin. The new plan will have sidewalks on both sides of the street. The existing tree masses there you can see are to remain and we're not disturbing any slopes over 26%. The total earth disturbance for the project is about 8.3 acres and we are in the process of applying for soil erosion NPDES permit through the DEP. As far as the actual homes are concerned, if you have any specific questions, we can talk to Michael about this. They're roughly going to start around the mid 600,000s, so there's some pretty nice homes going in and they'll range in size between 2,700 square feet and 5,200 square feet. We've been back and forth a lot with both Gateway and PVE. We were originally scheduled to be in front of you last month, but there was some, there was a list of comments that we wanted to get through. I believe we've gotten through most of those comments. Some of the remaining items are items that are pending, like a planning module is needed. That takes a little bit of time. As I mentioned, the NPDES permit takes a lengthy amount of time to get. We're in the process of, we've had the water, we've had the plans reviewed by the Westview Water Authority. We've incorporated all their comments, so we think we're good with them. The plans are into your sanitary authority for their review, so that's underway as well. So I think most of the wheels are in motion to get everything approved. Hopefully, we're here tonight again to answer your questions and to get your final recommendation to the Town Council. So I guess at that point, at this point, I'll open it up to any questions anybody might have.
I do just want to note before we jump in that the last iteration that you all saw of the PVE stormwater management comment letter, there was a revision that we got in yesterday that addressed pretty much the majority of the significant technical comments. So really, just the remaining items are things like that NPDES permit, which is something that comes from DEP and typically takes a lot longer than, you know, a normal approval timeline. So it is common to, you know, sort of prove things or, you know, move forward contingent on things that come from other agencies that we can't control the timeline on. Just received the review letter for that a couple hours ago on the latest revision and there wasn't really anything, you know, major that PV had to add at this point.
Yeah, at this point, we just received, I'm sorry, RJ, we just received the letter, yeah, as well. We reviewed it again. There's items that we need to, we need to work on and we need to get approvals from, but there's nothing in those letters that we can't, we can't address.
All right, are there comments from Planning Commission members?
Well, I have a call.
Go ahead, Dan.
There were a list of exceptions, variances, whatever that was, were requested. I thought we probably should go through those or discuss them in some order.
Yes, so those are all of the items on the agenda for tonight. The modification requests 1 through 4 underneath after the developer review item.
Can we go over what those are, where they're at on the site, like the regrade to 2 to 1s and all that stuff? Just so, while we got a context of those before we review them or approve them?
Oh, yeah, definitely want to have some discussion about those for sure before they go through. Ed, you want to go in order, modification number 1, as you had listed?
Sure. This is a modification, so I guess, I'm assuming it's the grading ordinance. What's required is...
1700 because of so, then yes.
Yes, yeah. The maximum cut slope is to be 2 to 1 and the maximum fill slope is 3 to 1. All of our cut slopes are, if you're looking at the plan, it's toward the top of the sheet. So those are cut slopes and those will be 2 to 1, which conforms to your ordinance requirement. It's the fill slopes on the lower portion of the site behind lots 101 through 108. There's a fill slope there that we're going 2 to 1 and not 3 to 1. It's just a little bit steeper. The reason for that is less earth disturbance. We have a geotechnical report that has been provided to your engineers. They've, I believe they've reviewed them and we'll have a geotechnical engineer on site to monitor the placement of that fill. So in our opinion, you know, 2 to 1 is, it's fairly common, you know, around the area. So that's the modification. Instead of doing 3 to 1 on those fill slopes, we're asking for a modification to go 2 to 1, so it's slightly steeper. But again, we'll have geotechnical support to back up our construction.
And I believe the response from Gateway on that review was that the justification was technically sound. Mike, did you have anything to add to that?
Nope, that's right. Our geotech staff checked it out and they're in agreeance. From a technical perspective, it is sound.
Okay, what's the, since I don't have drawings paper with me, what's the top of the, so the yards, the elevation of the yards behind lots 101 and 102 particularly? What's that elevation versus the elevation at the bottom of the slope?
Let me see here, give me a second.
Lines there.
There's about 28 feet of grade change on lot 101, which is probably your worst condition, from the top of the slope to the bottom of the slope. And RJ, if you have a, if you have C300...
Yeah, give me one second. I've got, I think I have...
You could see it there. That's, I mean, that's, lot 101 is probably the worst one, as you can see.
Yeah, I can't read the contours, so I have no idea what those lines...
Yeah, it's about, from top to bottom, it's about a 28-foot grade change.
And what's on 102?
About 22. So it goes 28, 22, and then you keep getting less from there.
That's a pretty steep hill.
It's not that long of a distance. I mean, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is that all 2 to 1 slope also?
Yes, everything behind lots 101 through 106, 107, that's, those are, that's the 2 to 1s. And again, that's for, you know, less earth disturbance, you know, less moving dirt around.
Again, I would suggest we put a fence at the top of those two at least, even if it's just a split rail of some sort to keep some little kid from taking a 28-foot dive.
That sounds like a good idea. Any other comments on this slope? Okay.
The area between the back of those yards, 101 through 108, and Fastinger Road, is that just being left natural state?
Yeah, wherever you see the contours, that's where we're disturbing. Everything else on the property will not be disturbed.
But even the, even what you're disturbing, when you're just reseeding it, what will happen there?
Yeah, we'll reseed that, probably with, you know, a crown veg type of seed, so it'll naturally grow up.
What is the disposition of that lot? What happens to it? Who owns it?
Well, the HO, obviously the homeowners want the lots, but as far as the open space, the HOA on that. Michael, you can chime in if I'm speaking out of school.
This is Mike Seedorf and that's correct.
Any other comments? Want to go on with your second modification request?
Sure, and I'm going to ask Graham for some help on this, but I'll start it off. Yeah, the ordinance requires the interior slopes of the stormwater basin to be at a 4 to 1 grade, a 4 to 1 slope. We're proposing 3 to 1. So by doing 3 to 1, you have less, again, less earth disturbance and I assume that the 4 to 1, it's probably, I'm guessing, is a safety concern. Typically, most, and I know this is not mechanist, but most of the basins that we design are 3 to 1 interior, so it's not an uncommon request. But yeah, we're asking, the ordinance requirement again is 4 to 1 on the interior slopes and we're asking for permission to do a 3 to 1. Graham, is there anything you can add to that, to the, to back up the stormwater?
No, I mean, no, you're absolutely right. I mean, 4 to 1 comes up occasionally in some municipalities, but I'd say in 90, at least 90% of all cases, the standard is 3 to 1. Again, I mean, a 4 to 1 interior side slope is, you know, it's usually done for safety. In this instance, we have a real unique situation with some of the soils subgrade and that sort of thing. In order to get the basin to function properly and to de-water properly, we have to slope it a little bit differently because we have to, we have to provide the volume that's required. We have a very small window in which we can fit the basin in, both horizontally, obviously, as you can see, but as well as vertically as well, as well. If you revert back to the 4 to 1 interior slopes, it would make the basin have to expand horizontally and it would also probably have to get deeper. And we don't have the flexibility to take it deeper because there's some difficult soils to deal with when you start going down further.
Mr. Albright, what's your take on this one?
As far as the slopes go, I'm in agreeance. 3 to 1 is fairly common in most areas. As far as, I know, I don't know if they got a chance to review PV's comments from today, but they had a couple recommendations from a condition standpoint as it relates to infiltration testing with this. Do you guys have any comments on that?
Yeah, again, Graham, you could jump in, but yeah, go ahead.
No, I've reviewed, so if you've seen it. Yeah, no, I've reviewed them. I mean, I have no issue with it at all. That would be more of a thing from Miranda and the Homeowners Association to have to, you know, to feel comfortable with and to go along with.
Are you, are you doing any kind of fencing to compensate for the slope?
We can.
Yeah, RJ and I had talked about that, I guess, and time flies, beginning of the week, I guess, maybe yesterday.
Yeah, it was at least a couple weeks, but it felt like yesterday.
We had talked about a potential, you know, because if you look at the plan coming in the development, you know, there's the road there and then there's a sidewalk right off of the road in essence, and then you get into the basin. We had discussed the potential to possibly put a, some sort of fence between the sidewalk and the basin. You know, maybe something, you know, we don't want to do chain link because of the aesthetics of it, but maybe there's a split rail fence that runs along that sidewalk to keep anyone from walking and going over the edge of there. I don't know if we need one completely all the way around the basin, but maybe along the sidewalk, we're definitely, we're definitely up to considering a split rail fence or something a little more ornamental in that area.
Yeah, and this is kind of connected to the next modification request coming up as well, which is we, our normal requirement is that the top of the basin needs to be at least 20 feet from a property line. So again, just because they're requesting for placement, we can see here, for it to start sloping down much sooner, you know, that might, a fencing requirement might be an appropriate condition to attach to granting a modification like that.
What about planting all the way around it? A hedge or something like that, leaving an area open for maintenance?
Yeah, I think that that might depend on the recommendations stormwater-wise for what types of vegetation would be put in sort of the berm area, just because it does kind of start sloping almost immediately, that that top edge might be considered part of the stormwater management basin. But, you know, I defer to the landscape folks on that one.
Does it seem, I'm sorry, does it seem like to me that if we have to make it much steeper to fit in that space and we can't get the distance that we're supposed to have from the beginning of the additional steeper slope from fences and where people are going to be walking, that perhaps it doesn't fit in that spot?
You know, that's a great question and I was just going to allude to that. When we first started out on this plan, our first option for a stormwater basin was down behind lots 106, 107 in that, yeah, in the tree-lined area, which would have, it would have been out of the way and down over the hill. And again, Graham, you can jump in any time, but the reason why it wasn't accepted there is because we, the depth of bedrock is so shallow, we could not get the required infiltration in that area. So we had to change, we had to change the plan to move it based on infiltration rates to the area at the front of the site. So we did look at an option of moving it from that area altogether, but it just didn't work where, over the hillside behind lots 106 and 107. So we did look at other options.
Right. It doesn't seem like it's working where it is right now either. It seems like it's too large of a basin for that space. It seems like maybe lot 101 house, maybe that that basin needs to take up that space too.
Well, I mean, you need to start to consider, first off, the basin is, you know, aside from the 4 to 1, the basin's designed to handle the storm events that are required in the ordinance. And a lot of times, you know, it gets down to losing lots. Sometimes the project doesn't work for the developer and the builder. So, you know, we think we have a good location for it to handle the infiltration and all the required storm events. And again, some of the modifications we're asking for, granted, they are modifications, but it's not something that's not out of line or typically not done in construction practices. So, you know, we feel it's, we feel it's a good solution in that area. And again, we could put up a fence, we could put up some landscaping. So we think we can keep people out of it and make it look attractive being at the entrance.
Can you tell me what the depth of the basin is from top of the berm to the bottom?
Uh, let me see. I think it's about 5 or 6 feet of surface air, of vertical depth rather. There's also some storage underneath it with some gravel beds and things like that. So some of the water is stored subsurface as well.
And then I just wanted to get a depth from top of berm to the bottom, you know, the basin bottom, 6 feet.
It's about 5 or 6 feet, right?
Okay.
Any other comments on this? We'll come back to it in a few minutes. How about your modification request number 4?
So number 4 has to deal with the sidewalk along Fastinger. RJ, do you have that exhibit that you can throw up there, please?
Eric, give me a second here. I want to make sure I'm sharing the correct screen.
We do modification 3, because I had 2 as being 3 to 1, 4 to 1.
No, did I miss one?
3 is the one that was to have the top of that basin closer than 20 feet to a lot line.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I believe it's the fill at the bottom of the basin is closer than 20 feet to the lot line there or to the right-of-way line on Fastinger.
Okay, so this is, this is the one that we were looking at briefly earlier.
Right. So what you're looking at here is, we did a, we did a...
New basin.
We did a quick exhibit to show you, because I believe per ordinance, the, there's a sidewalk that is required all along Fastinger Lane, along our property frontage. So we have a, we're proposing a sidewalk that goes down to a little bit below where the basin is. And if we were to install a sidewalk along Fastinger Lane, it would be, there would be, if you come from the back of the curb on Fastinger Lane, we'd be looking at a 4-foot wide grass strip and then a 4-foot wide sidewalk. And that area would essentially be level. So that's roughly 8 feet that's level with the road. So once you look at actually constructing that sidewalk, because of the hillside of our property, you start to get into extra grading to put that sidewalk in. So in the red shows the additional earthwork and grading that would be necessary to construct that sidewalk. So you can see the additional, not only the earthwork, but as you get down towards the right-hand portion of the project or the property, there's trees that are being removed too, to install that sidewalk. It's just so steep, it comes off of the back of the curb and then it starts to climb up the hillside. So that was our reasoning for the waiver for that sidewalk in that area is because it's a lot more earthwork, it's a lot more tree removal. And if you ask me, can it be done? Sure, it can be done, but it's just a lot of effort to go ahead and construct that sidewalk. So this exhibit kind of shows you what we were talking about and what our thoughts were on that.
Why is, why is there a 4-foot landscape strip between the road and the sidewalk?
Well, for one, safety reasons. You don't want people walking necessarily right up against the road. But two, we were just following the detail that's used inside of our new road. On the new road within the development, there's a 4-foot grass strip and then the sidewalk.
Yeah, but it's not required by the town. I mean, we have sidewalks in the town that are right next to the road all over the place.
I would not recommend we do that again, if we can avoid it.
Yeah, but if it's, if it's no 4-foot strip and you get a sidewalk that makes the earthwork easier or it's, you know, makes it 8-foot wide, I'm willing, I mean, it's not, it's not Route 19, it's Fastinger Lane. So, I mean, it's not like we've got 6 million cars going 50 miles an hour up there either. So, I mean, I... Park right next to the cars all the time and there's no sidewalk even, so, I mean, I'd sacrifice the 4-foot wide strip if you could make the sidewalk work easier.
Mr. Albright, do you have any engineering input on the technical justification and the grading percentage as proposed here?
I agree, that's a good point. I mean, that's one way to ease up on the grading if you had the sidewalk right against the road. It's not as safe as having that strip. But as far as our technical explanation, I mean, it is accurate. There is a steep slope right off of there. I guess we feel that if the town did agree with that request, it'd be a good idea to at least have the developer dedicate an easement. That'll allow for construction of the sidewalk in the future, if for whatever reason you want to go back and do that. At least here you have the easement in place. But yeah, I mean, it is, it's just more difficult with the slope does come right up to that road, more or less, along Fastinger. I agree, it can be done.
For clarity on my part, this is Dan. If your property along Fastinger does not go all the way to Rochester, am I correct in that?
I believe you are correct in that, yes.
So if, and I, I'm not stating at this point whether I think it's even necessary, but if you were to build that sidewalk, it would end at some no-man's land, so to speak, and it would not continue down to Rochester. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, you are correct.
I just want to jump in here. I, the chat box kind of hides itself when I screen share, so poor Lamar has been trying to get my attention here.
That's all good, thank you, RJ.
Please, if you had any other comments on the other modifications, feel free. But maybe sidewalk first and then we can revisit the others if we need to.
How far down are you proposing that sidewalk? Push it up the other way, RJ. Where it starts, the 1140, is that, how far you are proposing? Where were you proposing the sidewalk end?
We just changed the plans the other day.
I know, it's different than mine, yeah.
There's a, I believe there's a sidewalk across Fastinger Lane, so I think we, yeah, we come down to, if you see where the 140 contour is labeled?
Right.
It's about, if I had to guess... Alex, give me a second.
But that's where you're thinking about taking the sidewalk all the way down that far?
No, it stops short of that. It's up more towards where the, where you start to almost turn into, what is it? Broad Meadow Drive? It's up, yeah, kind of, kind of in that area where your cursor is.
Am I, do you can see my cursor? Okay, so this is where you're proposing you end it?
Roughly in there, yeah, where we have a crosswalk coming across Fastinger Lane and it hooks up again to the sidewalk across Fastinger.
There's not a crosswalk there. There's not a crosswalk there.
No, no, I'm saying, we have a proposed crosswalk.
Is that what was on the color, the colorized display?
No. Yeah, like I said, the drawing...
Can you see the color, the colorized one now?
Yeah, you can, you can see it stop.
You can see it stopping.
Is that the current one?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. You could see it roughly there. So it stops roughly in there and then we'd have an ADA ramp on our side. We would have a painted crosswalk across Fastinger and then we would construct another ADA crosswalk on the other side of Fastinger. So you could, in theory, get from our property all the way down Broad Meadow and then across Fastinger and connect up with that sidewalk on the other side.
Why stop it at an intersection? That kind of looks like a no-man's land of a T intersection.
It is on that one side. Where the stormwater basin is right now, isn't it relatively flat currently? And there's just, there's nothing, just a couple trees in the way there. It's just, it would be kind of an artificial border that you're adding to the mix at the moment. Right now, you just have the street, the street intersection and it just kind of smoothes into the grass. Isn't that right?
Yes.
Actually, I've been out there to take a look at that and I looked at whether you can get sidewalks in. And I felt you get sidewalks in all the way down...
All the way down to Rochester.
Well, it doesn't go all the way to Rochester.
His property doesn't go all the way to Rochester. A good bit of sidewalk in there, I believe, without doing all that grading that you were talking about. Fastinger seems to be on the south side of the right-of-way. It's not in the center of the right-of-way. Is that correct?
Yes, you're correct. It's more towards the southern side of that right-of-way, yes.
So there seems to be more space in there, to me, when I looked at it, just walking around out there. There seemed to be enough room to get some sidewalk in there. Now, maybe you have to reduce the planting strip or something like that, but I think you could get more sidewalk in than you're showing without doing all the grading that you're talking about.
I have a point of clarification here. On backup where your newly constructed street hits Broad Meadow, you're, you're considering building the sidewalk south down toward Fastinger and then, as you described, crossing over, getting across Fastinger and letting people utilize the existing sidewalk on the south side of Fastinger to get down to Rochester. What happens?
Correct, yes.
What happens on the north side? What happens on the north side of your newly constructed street? Because a couple of hundred yards to the north of that newly constructed street is another subdivision of with a sidewalk. Shouldn't something be constructed to make that a connection, not a gap? And from my viewpoint, frankly, if you did that, then that plan of homes to the north of your plan would be connected via sidewalk down to Fassinger. If you built the curb cuts and people could cross over and take the existing sidewalk on Fassinger, you would have completed a network that seems to make sense to me without having to build as much as you as much as we're talking about on Fassinger itself.
Everything you said is correct, and on our current plans, we do show a sidewalk from our development to the north connecting. It goes to our property line. But yes, it can there's a proposed sidewalk there as well.
Okay, and connecting to the one that ends right there?
Yes.
In my way of thinking, that creates a network. Uh, and the sidewalk, and this is this is contrary to what I stated last time, and I I've been out there to look at it, so I have a different viewpoint. I think that the sidewalk on the south side of Fassinger exists.
That's a trick.
Is is pretty is pretty decent. But that's just one man's opinion.
I agree with that.
The trade off here is is trees for whether or not we want to sidewalk on both sides of the road there.
With the density of the population being so low there, isn't it with the destiny of the population being so low there, do we need sidewalks on both sides?
It's just a matter of whether it meets our ordinance.
The only thing that I see Ted about building the sidewalk, if we require them to build the sidewalk on Fassinger, on the north side of Fassinger along their property line, it's still going to end in no man's land.
It will.
Uh, and that I don't I don't see a tremendous purpose in that.
Well, I was I was trying to get I was trying to go with what you said before. Is there an existing sidewalk to the north of, now you move your plan down a little bit.
This is how far?
The other way.
Or do you mean up here?
Yeah, there.
Okay.
To the north of Lot 117. Is there is there an existing sidewalk at that point?
It's on the satellite image. It's right here. There's an existing sidewalk.
There is. Yes.
Okay. Well, I could buy into that. I think you need to go a little further south with the with this. So you're past the intersection certainly. But you know, where you have, you should go at least around the round the bend with it.
Yeah, and I think our updated plans show it. It seems like they're a little further than that. So, yeah, we could definitely look into that, extending it a little bit.
Yeah, as long as, you know, the the goal is sort of wherever you have these termination points, that there should be either some ADA accessibility, whether it's enough room to, let's say, turn around, you know, mobility assistance device, or you're not sort of stuck, you know, in between the the berm of the road and a dead end of a sidewalk. So just something to consider with how far, you know, whether you want to modify the modification request to say it needs to go down to point X or.
This gets back this gets back again to what is the real disposition of this lot that's left over this lot, OS 1 or O 51? I mean, is that just going to sit there? Who owns it? Who's you said the homeowners association will own it?
That's correct, yes. And and it'll it'll remain open space and the homeowners can't mess with it. They can't cut the trees down. It'll remain in its natural state.
Is that stated somewhere on the drawing?
Um, it's not on the drawings. Well, the the drawings, our construction drawings do say trees to remain to be preserved, something like that. But I'm sure that that could be written in the covenants.
With the grading, I wouldn't see that as being a particularly developable piece of property anyway.
Have you seen have you seen property in Pittsburgh?
Well, you see, we're we're pretty tight on the grading already with how many modification requests they've got here, so.
Quite a few.
I think it would be tough, by the asterisk tough.
If you have a piece of property that big, if you have a piece of property that big, you can develop it.
With our homeowners association, anything that is open spaces is untouchable. And it's untouchable to its successors as long as the homeowners association exists, which it will for, you know, almost forever. Nothing can be done with that problem.
Okay, that's good. That's good.
Going back to the sidewalk issue. If if at some point on the the north side of Fassinger Lane, the to be constructed sidewalk will end. So south of your new street, hopefully, the sidewalk will get looped around the stormwater management basin. But what what are the logistics of really at any point taking that across the street on a crosswalk? Because I guess to RJ's point, you you have to hook it up to a sidewalk that's on the south side of Fassinger Lane. But I mean, I don't know that. I mean, is is the town going to be relied on to make that connection and essentially go through the two or three feet of grass in someone's front lawn to put in the uh, the slope interconnect between the south side sidewalk and the crosswalks? You don't wind up with just a crosswalk that dead ends at grass.
That would not be something we would necessarily take on unprovoked.
It's all within your right of way. So I would assume we'd come in and we'd build the the ADA ramps and we'd paint the crosswalk. So we would take care of that.
Yeah, although I think based on some of the grading percentages shown on this plan, you know, depending on how far it goes down, the the maximum grade here is 12.5%. So, you know, if you're ending somewhere down here, you might have, you know, essentially someone trying to cross the street at a you know, an angle like that going sideways. I'm not sure there's a great point necessarily, and there's sort of a whole lot of nothing on the other side of the street there, according to the satellite imagery anyway.
Yeah, I would think that crossing would happen. It's almost, in my mind, it would be kind of a determined in the field because you're rounding a bend there too, and you don't want to have the crosswalk in a blind spot. So, you know, I think when that time comes, we can coordinate with the township and say, hey, we want it here. And we have proposed before the crosswalks on either side, as you approached, as you approached the crosswalk, you know, we'd put up a couple of signs on either side that said, I forget the verbiage, slow pedestrians in the crosswalk or some warning sign to let drivers know that there's a crosswalk there to try to make it as safe as possible.
I'm envisioning that this crosswalk would exist. I can't see the lot numbers, but the first two lots, which are east of the the basin, whatever those two numbers are. I'm guessing that the I'm guessing that the crosswalk would be at equivalent to one of those two lots. Is that what you're thinking?
Well, typically, typically, the crosswalks are closer to the intersections. So we had it anticipated being closer to like behind the stormwater basin itself, somewhere in the lot that the stormwater basin is on. It would be on that bend somewhere in there.
Well, I'm sorry. I thought you said you didn't want it at the at the intersection.
I think there the plan that they're proposing here would show it closer to the intersection, and I can see especially with the bend there. You know, potentially a pedestrian safety justification for trying to locate them closer to intersections when possible, just because especially in Pennsylvania and sort of those more deeper residential subdivision areas, you don't expect somebody to just be crossing the street away from an intersection, you know, so.
Yeah, you're slowing down and making that turn kind of thing. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, going up there, it didn't seem like the the best intersection as is. Just kind of does a Y, and that's where part of my concern is it's not the greatest intersection and just to deposit pedestrians there to cross because you're coming up a hill on Fassinger, coming down on Broad Meadow. And you have that weird T. I don't know what that street is that goes to the west. Just seemed an odd existing status quo.
Wait, what's your thoughts on this?
What about placing stop signs at that intersection?
Well, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know you just can't go ahead and install stop signs.
That's true.
If it's a town road, they can determine what they want.
Yeah, Kim's like, I know that.
That's not true. That's not true. We can't put it anywhere we want. We've tried. It doesn't work.
Yeah, I mean, there are there are certain calculations that would have to be done regarding, you know, line of sight is one reason. History of crashes, which of course we wouldn't necessarily be dealing with a historical crash record here yet, but you know, line of sight particularly is one of the criteria that PennDOT usually uses. And just general traffic load, I believe there's also a certain volume that can trigger the appropriateness of a of a stop sign. Just eyeballing it, I could see one potentially ending up there, but, you know, I am not a traffic engineer.
RJ, Google, it looks like there's one going south on Broad Meadow.
Yes, there is.
But the Fassinger into whatever it's called as it continues to the west, at least to my quick look on street view here, doesn't look like that has a stop sign.
It doesn't.
That is the road that would be crossed by the cross.
Yeah, and I don't know that pedestrian crossing would necessarily be sufficient to trigger a stop sign. I mean, it makes sense that there's one on Broad Meadow Drive already. That's.
RJ, is there any way to set the sidewalk up so it crosses Broad Meadow kind of where they have it now? And then crosses Fassinger a little further down on the straightaway? So you kind of have to do a Z to get over, but you're further away from the bend and you're a little further away from action. So you're in more of a straightaway line of sight deal. But you have to come down Broad Meadow, you turn, you're coming down the sidewalk, you go right across Broad Meadow, get on a little stub, you know, where those trees are there somehow, and then create the sidewalk across Fassinger over there.
Yeah, so I I would suggest going forward with that, exploring where the property line is for, I'm pointing at my screen as if you can see my hand for between these properties perhaps. Just so, you know, you try and locate that in the right of ways, close to their corners as possible, so you're not just taking out a chunk of their front yard.
Where your where your where your cursor is right now?
Yes.
There is.
Cross.
That's a Y driveway apron on the northwest side of that intersection.
Here, yeah.
There's a there's a homeowner's driveway on the, what is it, the western side of Broad Meadow? It comes like right out at that radius of the of the of the road there where they where they intersect.
And there's no sidewalk in front of that particular property.
So it stops right at that property.
It stops right at that property. Yes, it does. On, you're talking about where the trees are, right where your cursor is, right?
Yeah.
Right across the street?
I remember seeing that, actually, yeah.
Yeah, there's no sidewalk there. That property is the only one on that side that does not have a sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, you know what? It looks like a sidewalk at that intersection, but it's just their driveway.
Yeah.
And you'd be crossing two streets as opposed to one.
Right, Dan. Right, right, right. To me, if you if you go, I like what Rob is saying. I think Rob has the a good idea of not just come straight down where their sidewalk ends, which is kind of in the middle of the Y, but come around just a little bit more. So it could cross there because I just looked it up and it said the safest place for a crosswalk is at street intersections. But I think having it end right where it is is too short, but if it came around, I don't know how many more feet, but it came around a little bit more and maybe crossed over where that little bush is on the south side, you know what I mean, around that far.
So you're you're basically looking to square off the sidewalk crossing so that it's the shortest distance across the street as possible.
So people would be expecting it. People don't expect a crosswalk in the middle of a block.
Yeah, this would be on the other side of the intersection, Kim, so it's still in the same place, but it gives you a better sightline because when you come up out of your lane, you're hitting a bend there, and you're not going to see that sidewalk until it's too late. Whereas if the other side of Broad Meadow, you have a little bit of a straightaway, actually coming both ways. And you can see what's going on in that sidewalk before you get there.
I I I like that, Rob.
Perhaps this modification request for the north side sidewalks to be not required would be more acceptable. Boy, my cursor doesn't want to just let me move this plan. All right, use your imagination for the bottom down. This could be a more acceptable modification if, let's say, the sidewalk was brought down to essentially the narrowest point of the street crossing that we could achieve. Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't I still think it should go the other way, RJ, because you've got that bend there. I don't know how you would want to put a sidewalk right there with somebody coming up Fassinger Lane and not seeing with the bend.
Right. Well, I think the challenge is that this whole area right here is just an open driveway rather than a yard. And there's no sidewalk from here to here.
Well, they can build side if it's right away, they can build their side, they can that sidewalk.
If you see that, if you see that property, you'll know they cannot afford a sidewalk.
No, no, developer builds a sidewalk.
Oh, in front of that person's property.
Yeah, because if it's in the right of way, instead of building the sidewalk on Fassinger, they'd build a piece of sidewalk over there.
Let me put it this way, they are not required to build a sidewalk on anything that is not their property. So.
Yeah, well, then get some money from.
Cannot necessarily mandate that on somebody else's property.
Well, you can get money from them for to do sidewalk somewhere else. I know the town did that for the school district.
We do not technically have a fee and lieu provision for sidewalks. So that that may have been either a different piece of code, maybe that doesn't exist or a separate agreement.
Okay.
I know. I've I've looked. So I would I would have to do a little bit of research as to how exactly that one came about.
What what would it take, just as another option, what would it take to put a speed hump somewhere on Fassinger just prior to this proposed crosswalk that would slow people down?
Well, that's something that I hesitate to make a judgment call on without the, you know, talking to the town manager first. My prior experience with speed bumps in general is that they are avoided if at all possible because they can pose a significant insurance issue.
It's the it's the snow plows that they destroy.
Yeah.
If the snow plowing in the street maintenance bumps are killers on those. It just totally destroys our equipment.
Okay.
That that's the that's the thing I've always been told, the reason why I like them.
That sounds right, because then you're then you're not going to plow off and filing a claim. So, yeah.
Okay, hadn't thought of that.
Okay, um, so if we're kind of wrapped up on the sidewalk issue, if we want to revisit it, you know, also fine, but we need an up or down recommendation for each of these modification requests individually.
Well, I'll tell you what. I had a couple of other questions on the plan itself. And I wanted him to go over the the stormwater plant a little more thoroughly. I wasn't sure where the water went from the basin. And I wasn't sure what was happening behind the houses on the lower side.
The water from the basin is piped down the hill. The water from the basin is piped down the hill and it connects into one of your township storm sewers along Fassinger Road right there. And then it continues down through the valley. Excuse me. And in the back. Stormwater is picked up in the back. I'm sorry.
Are these pipes that you're putting in or are these existing pipes?
Well, we connect to ones that are existing.
We we put them in, yes. We we connect to your inlet.
Correct.
Who owns maintenance of the basin?
I don't recall how you get eventually the, I can't remember if it's the HOA in perpetuity or not.
At this time, the way that PVE's conditional recommendations were drawn up, it was assuming that the HOA continues to own it and that it has to. I believe that there would be two year monitoring of infiltration. Mike, feel free to holler if you recall anything differently. But you know, ultimately, the final ownership of that might be something that would also be worked out in the developer's agreement stage, just to confirm, you know, what the public improvements would be versus what the privately owned management facilities would be. Any input on that, Mike?
No, you're right.
What are these dashed lines at the lower part of the lower lots on drawing C-400?
There's a storm line back there.
What is that?
There is a storm line and there's yard drains in the back there. Now, I think that's the dash. I'm guessing that's what you're looking at.
Well, it's just hard to tell what it is. That's all. Is it a perforated pipe?
No, it wouldn't be perforated, no.
How does water get into it then?
There's surface drain, yard drains, structures in the backyards that are protected with easements.
Okay, I can't see any of those on the drawing, but that doesn't mean.
Yeah, they're labeled YD for yard drain. There's half a dozen of them or so.
Is that on the same drawing?
C-400, if you're looking at that one.
Okay.
Yeah, they say YD.
In the box. Look in the box.
They're hard to read, you know?
I have a magnifying glass.
That's what we need.
Okay, I see where you're saying now.
All right, this is a 38 megabyte file, but I'm going to give it a shot and see if it freezes my laptop. It's a new laptop, so we should be okay. But here's the very latest revision that we got. So tell me any pages to head to.
Well, everything is so small, it's really hard to see. That's all.
Yeah, I can zoom into certain things.
I mean, on my laptop, it's even smaller.
While she's looking at that, a general question, if anybody can answer it. If all 19 or 17 homeowners vote to abandon the homeowners association, can they do that? And if they do that, what then becomes of the drainage basin and the common property between their homes and Fastinger?
I know that can't be done. It has been done.
Well, does our developers representative for the home building company have any comments on that?
So that's a great question, and I don't have a specific answer for that. Our covenants in our HOA documents are very detailed. This, that question has never come up to me before. I can review that, but the short answer is no, they cannot do that. I cannot say that with 100% certainty, but I can sure to add that to the covenants if that is a measure. If it is not already in the documents themselves.
I would suggest also, and again, I'm not an attorney, I don't know if RJ wants to talk to the town, but add some language that if they do that, the town can place a lien on their property to pay for the maintenance. That makes it a little more difficult if they think they want a get out of jail free card.
Yeah, I can talk to the town manager and the town attorney about any comments they might have on that issue before it hits the council agendas.
Yeah, we can clear that up one way.
What has happened historically with the town, which I do not agree with, and I believe has to be changed, is that these stormwater facilities, and I can name the developments who've done it. They have these and then in five years or 10 years, or the town takes them over. And then the town becomes responsible for them. It is a tremendous expense and a huge problem. Now, I don't know if that was part of some deal. I don't know why we would agree to do that. But we have done that in the past. It like fell onto us that now we're responsible for them. And we can't keep doing that. The cost of that is just phenomenal, stormwater management. So that needs to be tightened up, RJ, in some way. That can't keep falling on us to take these over.
I believe, you know, feel free to fact check me on this, everyone, because this is a newer one for me here for sure. But I believe there is also a stormwater maintenance fee that is assessed with certain stormwater management features so that in the case that they fall into disrepair down the line, we have some money sort of socked away that we can invest in repairs. And that's not huge. But there's some sort of calculation, I believe, in the ordinance for how that's assessed. And then that usually goes through PVE at the end of the development.
What happens to the existing stormwater? Existing runoff on the property now? What happens to that? Where does it go? Where is the flow directed or concentrated, if at all?
If I had to bet, I'd say it all just gets absorbed into the grass.
Well, it also just, Graham, again, sheet flow runoff on the Fastinger Lane, probably the majority of it goes.
Yes, exactly. Does it? Yes.
It's a big hillside.
That's a slope.
Won't that still happen on everything below your storm, your little outlets in the back of those lots? All of that will still come down onto Fastinger Lane, won't it?
That's correct, yes.
Yes.
Mike, do you have any thoughts on?
That doesn't seem too good.
Yeah, so currently, everything slopes from the top of the property down towards Fastinger Lane. So they're correct there, but basically you're going to capture and convey everything basically from the top of the property down to all the lots, like Lot 101 to Lot 107. You're going to now capture all that and convey it to the pond to be detained. You'll still have some undetained runoff, but it's going to be much less than what's there currently. And that's the whole point of having the pond in there, just so you can control the storm events before it gets discharged back into the system. If that makes sense.
Should there at least be a swale or something at the bottom of that to direct the water somewhere?
I think it's going to be much less than that's what's going there currently undetained. So currently you have the entire property basically coming down towards Fastinger. So it's going to be much less coming off of that slope that's getting there now. So I don't think there's any need to have a swell at the bottom there. I don't want to speak for the stormwater engineer, but that's my take.
I agree entirely, yes.
Even with all that additional impervious surface?
Goes to the basin.
Yeah, it's all going to be.
All of it?
Yes, all of it, yes.
Okay, okay. I thought you said that there would be some that ran down. I'm sorry.
No, what Mr. Albright meant by the uncontrolled is the area below the development that will remain untouched. And it will remain grass, vegetated, wooded, whatever it happens to be, mainly wooded. That area goes there now. We would just be cutting off everything above it.
We're not aware of any problems, are we, RJ, on Fastinger from that property? Any water that overwhelms Fastinger and he runs off that property as far as we know?
Through this process of the application coming through, nobody has brought that to my attention.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't already have a problem that hadn't been brought up.
Yeah, when I mentioned this plan, nobody has said, oh, that floods, you know? So no omnipotent guarantees, but I haven't heard anything yet.
Thank you.
Okay, you want to go back through these modifications, right?
Yeah, I'd just like to get a motion to either recommend or, you know, for or against for each of them to pass along to council.
Okay, the first one is to allow the slope for fill to be two to one, well, two to one horizontal to vertical. Now, you did say, the developer did say that he has a geotechnical engineer looking at this. Is that correct?
There was a geo tech report submitted that was reviewed.
There was, okay.
Yes.
Soils are okay for that?
I believe the recommendation was that it was technically sound what they submitted.
Okay. Do we have a motion then to recommend changing to two to one slope?
I'd like to modify it to request that a fence be put in behind 101 and 102.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to grant, well, to make a recommendation conditional on a safety fence to be added at the top of the slope.
For lots 101 and 102, yeah.
I had to ask, is there any lighting there to, I know that the basin's only like five feet deep, but assuming for a moment that it's full, is there any lighting there to kind of indicate in the dead of night that you'd be able to know where, you know?
Well, this is the grading on the other part of the lot. I think you're talking about the next item on the detention pond, don't you?
Yes, this is, and I mean, when we get there, we can discuss that, but.
No worries.
In theory, if a stormwater management basin is functioning correctly, unless you have had the flood of all floods, which we know sometimes Pennsylvania does, but theoretically it should never be full full. Okay, so we've got, go ahead.
I was going to say, even this year, we've had an event where we had a fairly straight week of rain.
Yeah, yeah, and we're in a drought. So, but, you know, regardless, okay. So the motion on the floor, Rob made it. It was seconded in by Dan, was conditional recommendation based on safety fence at the top of the grade at 101 and 102. Correct?
Right, that's correct. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item, which is request number two, is to allow for an interior slope of three to one in the detention basin. And Lamar, you had some comments on that?
No, I was just wondering whether there was adequate lighting to show it, you know, at night, things like that. I'm thinking of children primarily, but I just wanted to know. I know it's not very deep, but it's deep enough. If it's not very well lit.
That's not what you want. That's another PDF I had open. Don't worry about that. Here's what we want.
Well, I think Kim made a good comment that, you know, maybe we're trying to put too big of a detention basin in too small of an area. I saw, do you still have the underground detention as well as the basin?
Correct. There's a small portion of it, I believe.
Yeah, there we go, okay.
Now, there was another drawing, I thought, that showed the underground pipes laying horizontally. Am I wrong on that or is that changed? Or what's the situation?
I would need to see the current plan right here, because we kept going back and forth with that. I want to make sure we have the correct.
C-400.
C-400. I don't know what drawing we have here.
Okay, no, this doesn't show any underground piping any longer.
Oh, no, okay.
No, that's correct.
Well, how did you manage to get the volume then, if you haven't changed the basin, but you've eliminated the underground piping?
We did change the basin slightly, but the infiltration rates that were observed in the field were more conducive to not needing the pipes any longer.
Well, that.
The recommendations that PV made at, you know, the very last communication they got to me, which was a couple of hours before the meeting here, was essentially that for the next couple of years, we should do regular infiltration rate testing. And that if there is an issue where it's not performing as expected, then improvements have to be made to adjust so that the infiltration rate is meeting the targets. Mike, do you have any comments on that?
No, that's right. Their letter basically said, I think for two years, essentially the developer is going to monitor it. And then basically to end that two years before they give it over to HOA, they'll test it again. And if it fails the testing, I think they want them to rip it back up and put down some new soil in there to help out infiltration. So that was their recommendation.
Well, doesn't request two and three go together?
They're about the same feature, essentially.
Let me put it this way, I guess. It seems like we're too close to a lot line.
Yeah.
With modification request number three.
Yeah.
But they've reduced the capacity of the basin by taking out the underground portion of it. I mean, if you put the underground portion back in, couldn't you make the basin smaller and then not encroach on the property?
Not really, no. I mean, that's not why the underground portion of it was there. It was to help the water, it was to help the water de-water from the basin faster so that it was under the ground quicker. Your ordinance requires that the basin de-waters itself from the surface within 72 hours. But we no longer need the underground piping in order to do that. We found that the water can de-water itself faster than what we had originally thought. So we don't need to temporarily store it underground.
These modification requests were present at the original submission of this land development application. So anything that has changed in the in-between with underground piping design, that wasn't something that triggered adding these modification requests, from what I understand.
But, well, I'm not quite sure I understand what you're saying, but I mean, they've made changes to the plan.
Right, but the original submission had these same modification requests based on the design at the time. So regardless of whether the underground piping was part of the design, they were already asking to have the slope and the interior modified and the distance from the lot line modified.
But what he's saying is, but if you did leave the pipes in instead, would you not need those modifications, I think is what Ted is asking. That's his question. He's like, okay, you don't need the pipes, but maybe you can, if you put the pipes in, then maybe you don't need those other modifications, is what he's asking.
So to the developer, when you originally submitted this package, which I know this is before COVID all started, that we were, you know, going to get moving on this, but did the original design include the pipes that Mr. Minor is referencing here?
Excuse me, I believe so, yes. And those pipes were installed, and I think, Graham, are you there now, Graham?
Yeah, I'm there. And I was muted for some reason.
The original design, and Graham, you correct me again, the original design had the underground pipes because we didn't have the correct, we didn't have the infiltration testing rates at that time.
We had them, but they weren't verified yet. So we found out later that we didn't need them in order to get the water under the ground. We had to send PA Soil and Rock back out to verify them again at PVE's request. And when that was done, we found that we were able to simplify the design.
So we had better infiltration than we originally thought, so we could get rid of the underground pipes. Regardless of that, even putting those pipes back in, first off, we don't need to. And second off, it doesn't reduce the size of the basin. It doesn't help this cause, this request.
Original basin looked like it was much larger in the old location behind, I guess, what was the old lot, 106 and 107 over the hillside? Is that correct?
Yes, it was larger.
Can it get pared back any more than what's?
No, it's as close as it can be made size-wise in this condition.
Um, Mike, did you provide any sort of engineering insight on our side for common slopes in these basins? Size is something that you would normally see for a development of this type?
Yeah, it seems to make sense. I mean, like I talked about in the slopes, the three to one isn't really concerning for me. You know, going down from the four to one. And I guess to their point, what they're saying is the reason they had the underground was to get that infiltration happening quicker. So the fact that now they have the testing completed, they're now able to get that infiltration actually in the pond. So it doesn't really change the size of the actual pond itself. The pond size does seem appropriate for development. And if that went underground, they're still going to have the same size, I guess, in order to control the storm events. Like from the one to the 100-year storm event, has to be that size in order to, it's mostly the 100-year storm event that makes it so big. Like from the one to the hundred-year storm event, has to be that size in order to, it's mostly the hundred-year storm event that makes it so big. So, no, I think it's appropriate, kind of, the way, the size they have shown there.
The other con- concern I have is that the location of this is right at the beginning of your plan. Uh, who is going to be maintaining this piece of property where the, uh, the detention pond is, and, and what is gonna be planted there?
Homeowners Association.
Yeah, the Homeowners Association, and, and, and I can't speak for Michael, but I would assume with that pond being right in the front of the site, I would assume that's gonna be manicured lawn to the best of, uh, to the best of their ability to keep that all dressed up.
Yeah, ab- absolutely, I mean, as Ed said at the beginning, you know, these are high-end homes, you know, we're, we're looking at six hundred thousand and up. Nobody's gonna want some, you know, some eyesore at the beginning of their, you know, their, their community. We're, we're gonna make sure that this, uh, for marketing purposes, for aesthetic purposes, for safety purposes, this will be, uh, you know, it'll be manicured in a way that will be conducive to, uh, to marketing and to make it look really, really nice. Um, it may, it, it senses, it will be a slight feature, if you will, um, not a home, not a big home right at the front, but, but, uh, you know, from, from the eyes located, it'll be more of an open space area, and, you know, that'll be safe and aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah, I, I've wa- watched the, uh, the detention pond that, uh, was set up on, I guess it's Vincentian's property for the, uh, McCannell's Crossing. And that's certainly not a, um, a gorgeous thing to look at. It has an awful lot of uncontrolled growths all around it.
And I'm, I believe there were some vegetation recommendations made in one of the letters from PV. Just, um, you know, there, there are usually specific types of, of plants that are recommended in different spots in stormwater basins, you know, ones that do better in standing water versus, you know, low, moderate, high, whatever moisture. Um, so the planting plan would probably be informed on sort of what plant is appropriate for which zone.
And then we'd wanna keep kids out of there, now that we're steepening the slopes.
All right, then I would, I would definitely suggest making a, a condition of any potential approvals for these next couple to be some sort of safety fence.
We would need something that looks decent as well as protects the, uh, from the kids.
Even, even with the slope that they're proposing, if it was twenty feet away from the property line, you know, potentially that would be permitted. So I, my concern is really just how close it is to the sidewalk, that as long as there's some sort of, you know, whether it's, you know, also got decorative features or whatnot, that there's some sort of safety fence, especially for kids that might be playing in the neighborhood.
Just so everybody knows, there's gonna be a bus stop there, so.
There will be.
Oh yeah, the, the bus won't go up in that road, they'll have to all walk down, stand at the corner.
Make it hard to climb.
Corner, Broad Meadow and, and Fassinger?
Well, either that or, it depends, either there, or they could be at the corner of Broad Meadow and whatever this new road's gonna be called. So you're gonna have kids close to this whole thing.
No, you're talk, you're talking about a school bus, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, I think, I think there should be some, some protection around this then.
Um, so my question, I'm, I'm, I'm stuck on the slope. Uh, my question about the slope is, if the slope, the steeper slope that they're proposing is okay, then why does our ordinance not allow that slope, and then everybody has to ask for variance?
Hmm, the million-dollar question, I mean, there-
If it's really okay, our ordinance should say it's okay, is what I'm not getting. Do you see what I'm saying? Because we've decided, our ordinance has said, this is a slope that we think is best. So everyone who comes along says, you know what, we don't really wanna have that slope, we wanna steeper slope, because we're putting a big pond on a little piece of property, and then we say, oh, well, it's okay. If it's okay, then we need to change our ordinances so they don't have to ask for permission every person that comes. If it's not okay, then we need not to approve it.
I am one hundred percent on the same page as, as you in terms of, you know, taking a look at sort of what are the latest design standards, you know, are, are the criteria that maybe we based some of our, um, hydrologic benchmarking, have those been more recently updated? Um, you know, that's not something that I can necessarily answer off the top of my head, although, um, Mike from Gateway probably has a little bit more insight on that, because I know he's worked with a lot of development in stormwater, you know, of course, he can't speak for PV, who is our particular stormwater engineer, but he does have knowledge of that, um, since he's on the call.
And here's the other problem, is that we have approved these slopes, and we have such problems with stormwater management. It's gonna be one of the biggest things in our budget this next year, is because, we, you know, we can't manage our stormwater. People upstream, people downstream, you know, I don't know that allowing slopes that are going to promote faster runoff is really what we should do. Now, going to a detention pond may be a little bit different, you know-
Exactly.
What I'm saying, but, uh, I'm looking at the slope on the back of these properties, you know, I just, I just think we need to really, really think about this. This is a huge problem, and we need detention ponds that work, that work for a hundred-year storm, that work for a hundred-and-fifty-year storm, because they're coming. We're getting those.
So with the, what appears to be the current grading, I'm gonna try and find a place to grab on here that isn't grabbing onto a line. I, it appears that at least the current grading where they're not, um, they're, they're asking for the fill in the slope to have that modification. They're basically just table topping those lots, so potentially the grading that they're asking for the modification on is more or less already present in the existing site conditions. Um, Ed, would you say that's accurate?
Yeah, those existing, that, that existing hillside's pretty steep, especially as you go towards the, I guess, south, a little further down Fassinger, they're, they're steep slopes.
You're essentially, in that situation, you're just table topping the usable lot area, but you are not increasing the rate of descent in the back of those properties, it's just, that's what's already there, and you're asking to not have to spread that out more and move more dirt, is that correct?
I would say that's correct, yes.
Okay, so, point well taken on, we should really think hard on the, sort of, the ones that are detention basins if we're allowing them to, you know, put fill in where it's steeper than our ordinance would require. Um, right now, this is kind of what's already happening on this property. Um, regarding the four to one versus the three to one, I'm, I'm maybe gonna kick it over to Mike to see if, maybe he can explain in a little more detail, you know, what exactly do those numbers mean functionally, when, when a regular, you know, Joe is looking at this basin? What's the difference between those two options?
Yeah, I think the four to one is just in reference to the interior slope, so you're basically where you're seeing like the top of the berm, like that eleven, like sixty-two elevation, and then down to eleven fifty-five. That's where they're doing the three to one instead of four to one interior slopes. So, I don't know, I mean, like, like I talked about earlier, typically, a, a lot of these guys are three to one, so I, I don't disagree that maybe that's something that needs to be looked at and modified to, so you can, you can eliminate a lot of these waiver requests, because three to one is typically, three to one is typically what you see in other places, um. So that's something we can-
And that's certainly not a new concept for us, you know, that maybe there's some, some things that, whether it's a modification or a variance request, if it's frequently granted, maybe we should take a second look at, does this regulation make sense for what, what we actually see on the ground?
Yeah, a- and also for maintenance, not that maintenance would be our concern if HOA takes over, but it's easier to mow, like a four to one slope's easier to mow than a three to one slope. So that's something also to take into consideration, but again, that would be like on the HOA anyway to, to maintain that, but, um-
I think, too, again, Ted, Ted can speak up a little bit too, I mean, I think from a historical perspective, the four to one makes it easier if somebody gets in there for some reason and there's, you know, they get trapped, they can get out, it's an easier hill to get out of. The other thing, it doesn't look as much of a, doesn't look like a crater, you know, so it's not just this hole dug in the ground, it's got more slop, gradual slopes going down into it. So it does look like you just took a bunch of dirt out and, you know, left some dirt around it, so, so the four to one, yeah, operationally, structurally, is probably not required, I get it. But I mean, you're trying to soften the look of these things, so you don't have this, again, I'm gonna call it a crater in the ground. Um, and you're right, Mike, it is a lot easier to mow it, and if you don't mow it, it becomes weeds and, you know, it, it's, it's, it just contributes to ongoing maintenance issues, so. And I don't recall us granting a ton of modifications for this over the last several years, anyway. Yeah, I'm totally wrong, RJ, you can research that, but-
Uh, yeah, I, I would have to, I can't say I have that one up in the, the noggin yet, but-
Remember, I don't think we've had a lot of those, so, it's not like that is something we've had to deal with a lot, but maybe I'm not remembering.
I'd like, I'd like, um, maybe the developer to tell us, I, I'm having a hard time seeing exactly how this, uh, this basin is, is, uh, shaped. Do we, if you started at the road, on, uh, the new road, and did a cross-section through this, would you rise up to the rim of the, uh, basin and then go down, or is it level to the edge of the basin and then go down? How does that work?
Drop down into the basin.
So there, so you're saying there's no, there's no rise from the road to the edge of the basin?
Uh, no, sir, there is not.
Okay.
So it'll be from the road, it'll be level for the planting strip, and then the sidewalk, in essence, and then, you know, X amount of feet from the sidewalk, it'll still be level, and then it'll gradually drop down into the basin.
Okay, good, that's good.
How many feet?
How many feet of what?
How many feet from the sidewalk to it starts dropping down to the basin?
Um, let me see.
And while he looks that up, there will be a fence as well as, uh, plants and trees between the sidewalk and-
That's what, that's what I was really wanting to know.
You're roughly ten feet from the, from the back of the sidewalk, level area, then it starts dropping down, so there's plenty of room in there to come and install that fence that we've been talking about.
Yeah, from, from our perspective, uh, safety and aesthetics are paramount, uh, especially safety, obviously. Um, so we, we will, uh, make sure that it is as safe as possible and, uh, and looks, looks great, um.
I know we talked about a split rail fence at the backside of those first two lots. Uh, and I guess I'm okay with a split rail fence back there. I would prefer, and I don't know the type of fence it is, but the, the, they're black aluminum square ballisters, if you will. Say what?
Ornamental fence, that's where you, you know, it's crossing.
The split rail fence does not keep many things out, it's only about two feet high, and it doesn't keep anything out.
Now, the back, the backyard is just to keep somebody from, you know, walking over the edge, that's a different situation, I totally agree. And you want something a little more substantial in this area.
I'm pro that fence design.
How do we make sure we get the right kind of fence, is that something you guys would work on, RJ?
Um, yeah, I, I would say, uh, let me see what wording I wanna put in here.
We could have like a four-foot-high, black aluminum decorative fence kind of thing, yes.
There you go.
Just on the side by the sidewalk, because the sidewalk goes down Broad Meadow too, so you have to go, to me, you got at least two sides. Third side is right up against the lot one oh one, so you almost wanna do it there too.
I, I would, I would say anywhere that this, um, pond abuts the sidewalk closer than twenty feet from the lot line.
Well, if you could, um, Broad Meadow, if you start to, if you, say you come out of our new, our, our new road and you turn left and you're walking down that sidewalk, as you start to walk down that sidewalk, on your left, the embankment goes up, you're going up to the basin. So I, I personally wouldn't think you'd need a fence along that, that sidewalk down Broad Meadow, because it's climbing up, you know what I mean?
I'm going for the fence, cuz we're going from four to one to three to one.
I agree with you.
But along, I, I don't think along the sidewalk, it keeps anybody out, because it, it's rising up, so, I mean, if you were gonna do a fence-
I think you need it, I think you need it at the crest all the way around.
And, and again, there's gonna be landscaping throughout that, that area, I mean, that, that's gonna be the first thing they see is the, the hillside up to the basin. Um, we're gonna make sure that that, that's, again, aesthetically looking, um, as well as having trees and barriers, not necessarily a fence, if that's what you truly want, that's okay as well, but, uh, you know, there, it's just not gonna be a, a lawn going up to the basins.
What pages are the trees and barriers on, on the plan?
That would be... C eight hundred.
C eight hundred.
See what?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
Yes.
On our old plans, we had some landscaping at the bottom of that basin fill. Uh, but it was determined by PV that, you know, structurally, they don't want anybody messing with that embankment, so we got rid of that landscaping altogether.
I don't have a C eight hundred.
I don't either.
On the screen. There's no landscaping.
This was, this was the revision that probably came in last night. So this page may be new.
I think, I think they, I think they should so, show the landscaping around this, uh, this pond, I mean, it is the entrance to your, uh, your plan. I think it's to your benefit to, to make it look good all the way through.
So the, that change was based on a recommendation from our stormwater engineer that the integrity of the top of the basin not be affected by vegetation.
And I apologize if I misspoke there.
Say that again?
I apologize if I misspoke earlier.
Yeah, it was there up until probably yesterday at some point.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a recent recommendation from them.
They don't want the top, no, say, tell me again why they don't want vegetation on the top?
It weakens the structural integrity of the fill embankment, the roots.
What about a fence then around it?
No, that's, that's more likely.
It affects the structural integrity.
Say that again?
And I don't see how that would impact this, they're worried about the roots causing the soil not to be able to be compacted.
You know, uh, we always have plant hillsides to make sure that the, everything stays together, don't we?
That's what I thought.
Mr. Engineer, give us some help here.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't, I don't wanna speak for PV's comment, I mean, there are, I think there are plantings and trees that I agree are better, I think, for steeper slopes that do kind of buffer stabilizes, so, I think if we looked at the right kind of plantings, you could probably get away with that and do that, otherwise, if, if you're not planting the right thing, it would weaken that slope. So I think it might just depend, if they get a little more creative, it depends what they plant on that slope.
Maybe it would make more sense to recommend along the Fassinger Lane side some plantings, rather than along Broad Meadows, since it's so close to that stormwater basin top?
I thought maybe it was just from debris from the plantings falling in the basin and filling it up, that maybe is the reason they didn't want it.
That's also possible.
That's what I thought, the debris getting down in there.
Man, landscaping or not, I would say we wanna, I would reckon, my recommendation would be a four-foot-high aluminum ornamental fence around the whole breast, the whole top of the basin.
The, um, the, the Stormwater Review Letter, which you all should have received in the Dropbox, I believe on Friday, um, it was comment number six on PV's letter, um, where they recommend no woody vegetation on the berm of the basin, and that any proposed trees needed to have their drip line, so how far out their, um, their branches, you know, extend basically, that they can, they could have water coming off of it, um, would be beyond the toe of the basin slope, so essentially beyond the top where the basin officially begins, I guess in layman's terms. So that was, that was the vegetation recommendation from PV. Anyway, I do like the, the nice fence that you're talking about, Rob. I think that that could be visually beneficial, as well as, you know, cover the sidewalk distance issue.
If I could interject, I'm one hundred percent for the fence and for a ornamental, a very high-end fence. Um, the way you phrase it, um, I'd like some, you know, artistic creativity, um, to go with the, the monument that we will put up there as our way to make it, you know, based upon- the monument that we will put up there as a way to make it, you know, based upon township, you know, township approval, something along those lines. So we find a wooden fence may, you know, go with the aesthetics of, of the community opposed to aluminum, uh, something along those lines, uh, you know.
What, what we're really concerned about is the height and how easy or probably difficult it is to get in there for any of the, the munchkins waiting for the bus. So we could do, if the commission's comfortable with it, it is designed to be approved by the town, something like that.
It's fine with me, I mean, I just don't want to, like, we don't want a split rail fence.
Yeah.
Sure.
I suppose that's okay, I'm, I'm, I don't quite understand, uh, PV's, um, comment about the, the landscaping, particularly on the sides of this thing, but that's, my experience is that wherever you have a grass side to a steep slope, you're inevitably going to get erosion ruts down through it. But we'll go with what they, what they recommend, I suppose. Okay, uh, what else we got here?
Well, so we're going to need, um, a motion on, I guess we've sort of been talking about modification two and three in tandem, but, you know, we should do one at a time.
Okay, let's do number two then first.
We'll make a motion to approve.
And I, I would, I, yeah, I would add the fence to that motion.
That's what I was going to say, approve modification number two with the requirement of a four foot high fence around the top of the basin. Uh, final design to be approved by the town administration.
Dan, is that accurate with the motion you would like to make?
It was Rob who made that motion, but this is Dan and I'll second it.
Oh, sorry, I don't know why I thought that was Rob, I guess you popped up on my screen. So, Rob. Your motion is for the condition that a four-foot safety fence be installed around, what parts of the basin?
Whole top.
Entire thing.
Top perimeter.
It should be labeled as a decorative fence, RJ.
So you, right, um, chat request, do you want me to, to stipulate material, um?
No.
I would think it should be, it should be metal of some sort.
The stipulation at this point.
I would think it should be metalist, uh, metal, but we will, we have left that up to you to, uh, to review and approve.
Okay, all right, safety fence decorative to be installed, and so for the, for the portion in which it, the grade rises from the sidewalk to the top of the basin, are you looking for?
All the way around.
All the way around the top.
Want that included, okay, so it's a, it's a peak.
Yeah, 360 degrees.
Okay. Well, as long as they can get into mowing.
Yeah, you have a gate on it.
With a gate, okay. Okay, so I've got the condition of a four-foot decorative safety fence to be installed around top complete perimeter of the basin at a design to be approved by the town.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, the third item is to allow the top of a cut for the storm basin to be closer than 20 feet to a lot line. I'm not sure that that's a good way to state that, there probably should be some actual dimension there, don't you think?
Um, well, so that, that was just worded in that way because I, for the actual motion, I tried to pull the language directly from our code, which just states, it must be, you know, at least 20 feet away from the lot line, so if, if we have an exact dimension that developers could get us here, we could potentially incorporate that in the motion.
Well, the only reason I said that is because it could be one foot.
Yes.
That's fair.
Uh, I'm, I'm trying, I'm, I'm having trouble determining where the top of this thing is.
Edinburgh, you have any thoughts?
Looks like it goes up from the road, I, I can't, but I'm having trouble seeing where it is.
It, it slopes up from Fassinger Lane to the basin.
I mean, it looks, it looks, where, where, what is the elevation of the top of that, uh, that thing?
The embankment to the bottle, I think, uh, what is it, 1162?
No, it's gone, there.
This one's going to have better lines for you here. Yeah, you guys get a little bit of a lag when I, when I click on things, sorry.
Okay, so, 246. Okay. So it looks like there's a bit of a, a flat area and then it goes down into the, the basin.
Yeah, the sidewalk is this, this bit right here.
Yeah. That's the problem with having reduced drawings and then even more reduced, uh, screen images.
Yeah. Tried to get you the big files in the Dropbox, but those are so kind of tough.
So what is the line that we're looking at for this relief?
Is it the Broad Meadow side that we're worried about?
No, the, the new road that goes into this plan.
Oh, their, their new street, okay.
Yeah, this is, this bit is the closest section.
It looks like 1170 or 1168 might be the top. Does that sound right?
No, 11, the top, I guess I'm confused of what's the, the top of what?
The top of your, your basin at the north side.
Well, see, it slopes straight from the bottom of the basin all the way up to the road, so there's never, where it levels off with the sidewalk.
The functional top of, the functional top of the basin is around 62.
Correct, 1162.
Yes.
So that would be right about.
Right, the water would never rise higher than that.
But the slope starts right about here.
70, is that what we're saying?
That's correct.
Right, it'll slope up and then it'll level off up towards where the sidewalk is.
Okay.
We're showing the emergency spillway rim in 1140 or 1160. That theoretically is the highest point, highest water level in your basin.
No, the water can raise higher than the top of the emergency spillway.
I hope it's not, it's going to go over.
I know, you really hope it doesn't.
That's, it has to, that's the only way you can go over the top of it.
On that south side of the basin, what's the highest elevation?
1162, the top of the embankment.
I think it's 60, yeah, 62 or 64.
62 is what it looks like.
62, yeah.
So what's the ordinance issue that the modification is related to?
The, the basin cannot be closer than 20 feet to a property line.
So we're looking at lot 101?
I believe it's to the road and to 101.
But to the road looks pretty far. If it's 62, that's considered the top of the basin. But, but 101 is, is not very far at all. I don't have a scale or anything.
Let me pull up the original modification request and see if that's still accurate. But definitely it's too close to lot 101 on its own.
Is the original modification request associated with this location or the original stormwater, uh, detention facility down the hill?
This is, this, when I reviewed this to bring it to the last meeting, that was, that was in reference still, um. Hmm, let's see. Therefore we have size.
It looks like 1162 is basically at the line of lot 101.
So if, if you, th- this should have been something that was provided with last month's documents, so, um, if you don't have those handy, I completely understand. Uh, the, the, this modification request, which is where a cut or fill exceeds 15 feet in height, which you've got here to here, you know, the, the depth is greater than 15 feet. The top of the cut or toe of the fill shall not be closer to the lot line than 20 feet, so you could say that essentially where it finally flattens out is the top of the cut. Um, and so that is not supposed to be closer to a lot line than 20 feet. So it's not necessarily just the top of the basin, it's the top of the cut.
RJ, also the fill slope, I think the bottom, that's, that's like higher than 15 or 20 feet, and that's right on the, the lot line for Fassinger, so I think it says so as well.
So basically all around, we've got some sort of edge of a grading feature, one way up or down, that is closer than 20 feet to the lot line, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
That includes the southern embankment by the emergency spillway.
Correct.
Yeah, I think so. It's hard to tell on these drawings. Is, uh, are, are, are all the grades gentle enough to mow with a, uh, riding mower?
Not two to ones. Anything?
All three, isn't it all three to one in there?
The, the two to ones would be the, the lines that are more running along the back of these properties, which I assume are going to become, you know, wooded areas.
It almost looks like the area in the, uh, adjac, either in or adjacent to the basin, right adjacent to lot 101 are very close together. I don't know what that is. But whether that's three to one or two to one or what it is, but what I'm getting at is it cannot be maintained easily.
So I think the, 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 the slope modification request were number one and number two. So those were already the ones that we went through and said they're geotechnically sound. Now, put it this way, things are not always easy to mow, but sometimes you buy the house anyway and then you watch your husband run up and down the hills with the push behind him. That is the hazard of being a homeowner if you so choose to live there.
Well, I can appreciate that on lots 101 and 102. But this is, this is commonly held property and some, they're going to have to hire somebody to do this.
Yeah, or, or, you know, it might become wooded back there, you know, that's certainly something that we see where just because your property extends all the way to the back doesn't mean you use it as a yard necessarily. Most of, most of my lot is, um, me looking up a cliff with a lot of trees on it. There's no mowing up there.
What's the rationale for the ordinance? The, the requirement that the modification is sought for, what, what's the genesis of, where that comes about? Is it safety, is it just access?
Um, but perhaps our engineer on hand can speak to just a, a general logic behind it, because I know he and I are both kind of new, working with the town, so these were probably put in place before we were here, but Mike, any, any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm wondering if it's more, you don't want to, if it's not stable, if you have a big slope rig and says it's going to cause issues where into the public right of way. Like, is it going to, you know, not be stable and kind of slip, and then you have like a, all of a sudden your sidewalk or your roads messed up because it's so close to, to the right of way essentially. Um, and maybe there's an aesthetic part of it as well, you don't want to see a big hill right against the, that close to a lot line as well. Um, but I, yeah, I'm not positive, that's, that's my take on it. You, you want to kind of try to avoid anything that might have a negative effect on like your public right of way.
But the geotechnical report that was submitted, at least in this specific situation, checked out. It was sound according to the, the engineering review, right?
Yeah, that's correct, and we had RJ review that as well, so.
Okay.
And then to me, it's almost like a setback thing that, and I, I don't remember us ever having to deal with this too often, to be perfectly honest with you in the past. All anywhere. Um, so to me, I, I interpret it as a setback thing that they can't meet the setback as much as anything, that's how I look at it, but it could be totally off base, but in this case, their setback, they can't meet the 20 foot, just like we have a side yard, you know, we're, that whole.
Right, right, this one just falls on you guys because it's not a structure.
The answer, lot one knows that that pond's going to be there then, which I assume they will when they buy their house, then that's, they're the, they're the, really the biggest impact to this.
But part of it is also safety, I think, and if lot 101, if it were just a foot or two off of the, uh, start of the slope into that pond, into that retention pond, I think what you don't want is somebody just inadvertently stepping a foot off of their property and whoops, slipping down that hill.
And that's, we're putting the fence around the top of the pond.
And, and, that's right, and that's what the fence seems to guard against.
Well, and also, the modification number one, the condition that we put on that was that there was a safety fence to be placed at the top of the grade for 101 and 102.
So that was. That's the back, okay, that's the back grade, I, I'm talking about the, the, the retention pond. Yeah, 101 and, lot 101 has two things to worry about, lot 101 and 102 have just the, the backside to worry about. But what, 101 has the side retention pond and the back slope to worry about.
And, and at this point, we have the fences, right?
We have the, the split rail fence in the back and we have a, a more substantial fence around the pond, so, but my point was to, part of the reason for the 20 feet, I would think, is safety such that there's a little bit of a buffer, so if you happen to step off your property, which you are entitled to enjoy, but if you inadvertently step off your property, you don't all of a sudden get into trouble in a matter of a foot or two. And the 20 feet was that buffer, but we've alleviated some of that with the fence.
Right.
Are there any sightline issues if you're coming up on Fassinger and making a right onto whatever, uh, broad, uh, meadow as a result of the, increased grade? Because right now, it's, it's a farm field, so it's open. If you're coming around that corner, is there any impact you have if some car's got its flashers on or there's a, a school bus, whatever it may be, that that, uh, slope would impact?
Well, I.
I don't believe so, no.
Yeah, if I, if I understand what we've been looking at correctly, the grading that is closest to Fassinger Lane is basically the existing condition of the property, now I know it's, it's open on top of it, but essentially they're not making anything taller, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So the detention pond will be dug down, not built up? Is that right?
Well.
Well, it has to be built up on the back.
Yeah.
Okay, so then you're sure about the line of sight there? Because it's very clear right now, I was concerned about that last time myself, and I went out there and it's quite clear now, so. But if you're going to build it up, then it could be, and that's, um.
No, it, it would, it would be fine, and, and, I mean, that's all been verified and looked at and taken care of, I mean, that's, that, that shouldn't be any concern of all, at all. Who looked at it?
Okay, good.
All right.
I'm sorry, Brendan, did you have a question?
I just wondered who looked at it.
Oh, um, Mike, would you like to elaborate a little bit on the development review process?
Yeah, I, I. Just on that specific point, just in terms of the
Right line.
The, the sightline, the view. Yeah, as it relates to that, um, portion of that, I, I personally didn't, I'll, I'll have to check with Shannon and Dan, I can check with them tomorrow to see if that's something they checked out. Or I don't know if that's something that would fall on, um, the traffic engineer at all, so that I'm unsure of, but I, I'll double check with Dan tomorrow.
All right. Have we beaten this to death yet?
I think we have, I think Brendan's going to be good.
Yeah, I think, I think we had a good review on this. Yeah, I think, I think we had a good review on this.
Well, Ted, Ted, can I offer support Brendan's of approving it with the condition that it does not impact the sightlines around that corner?
Yes. Negatively impact, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wasn't thinking about that, but that is a good point to make sure that, because that is one of the areas where we are within the twenty feet, right? RJ?
Yeah.
So we want to make.
The, the corner, you mean coming up Fassinger or turning into Broad Meadow?
No, up Fassinger.
Coming up Fassinger and turning into Broad Meadow where the sight distance is impacted by the slope pushing into that twenty feet.
They would, they would do a, a site triangle.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it's hard to just eyeball it and say it right now. I didn't see any comments about site triangles on the letters.
Condition would be that it does not impact the site.
Okay, so that's the condition you want, you want to put on number three?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so do we have a motion for modification number three contingent on the site triangle not being impacted by the modification request?
Yeah, I think Rob just made that.
Okay, so that's a motion, all right.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second this motion.
All right. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. The fourth item is to waive the required sidewalk on the north side of Fassinger Lane. More I think about this, the less I like the proposal, I have to admit. This will go down to the next property, the next property when it gets developed, there will be a big gap in the sidewalks. It'll come up, it'll come up Fassinger, stop, and then come up to, uh, whatever it is, Broad Meadow. I think that should be continuous. But other comments?
There's one on the south side, I'm okay with it ending, but I think where it crosses needs to be figured out.
I, I agree with you, Rob, I, Ted, if, if there was gonna be more homes or other development on that north side, but right now it's just some trees and field. And I don't see people coming out of any driveways or, or streets or homes.
I was talking about the property to the east of this development.
I, I know, you're saying.
Property between, uh, our, the one we're looking at tonight and, uh, whatever that is, Rochester Road?
Yes, and, and what I think you're saying is that when and if that gets developed, we would, because of our requirements, have a sidewalk designed and developed there.
We'd have a discontinuous sidewalk, yeah, we'd have a discontinuous sidewalk.
So I, I think in, in this case, Mike actually made a suggestion when Gateway reviewed the modification request, that there needs to be a dedicated easement as a condition that if it becomes appropriate to have a sidewalk down to a certain point later on, like you're saying, if development occurs, that there is a right to put a sidewalk in there to connect it.
Who would pay for it?
That's right. That would be the HOA, not the developer, the HOA, that would fall on the HOA, not the developer.
That's right.
But the chances that happens.
Well, I mean, you know, if it's an easement, it's up to the, the town to make the determination whether they want to enforce that or not. So whether, let's say, down the road, we've got a little pile of houses that somehow, I mean, heck, it's Pittsburgh, so who knows? But we cut a development into right here for two or three houses. And so we've got sidewalks along here, but we've got an easement from this area to this area. You know, that plan, highly likely they're gonna need some modifications. Maybe they're gonna ask for some sort of consideration on a cut. If that's something we want to explore at that point, making a contingency is a thought.
But I thought I heard at the very beginning of this is that, that that property is, is deemed to be held undeveloped.
That is a good point, HOA covenants, open space, that's what they said.
And, but then what was not answered was, what if the HOA is disbanded for whatever reason? Could that then get sold by the HOA to a developer who does choose to put some homes on a very steep slope? I don't know how any of that works legally. But as it was stated at the beginning of this, that property will not be developed by the HOA.
Right.
It cannot be developed by the HOA.
Yes, I would agree, as long as there's an HOA. I, I, I go back to Rob's comment. I'm okay with the south side of Fassinger existing sidewalk. But I, I would want a very clear and obvious crossing up near Broad Meadow. Exactly where I don't know, but, uh.
Yeah, I mean, the closer to the intersection, the better, because again, when people are coming through intersections, your brain says, somebody might be crossing here, much more likely than at something that's not tied to an intersection.
Just such a bad intersection though, especially with that driveway, which adds essentially a kind of a middleway between the Y of Broad Meadow and Meadow Crest.
I, I would suggest, if you have the sidewalk come along at all to the north side of Fassinger, that you just ask that the crosswalk be at the narrowest point with a sight distance that's appropriate. Now, again, we can't, we can't go onto the other side and require them to construct a sidewalk on property that they don't own. But you can round the corner to close the gap if we think that makes.
If that property's the right of way, they can build it for you as your agent. There's a, if there's a right of way on the other side of that road, it's in front of that other house, it's the town's property. So have a sidewalk built there by somebody to build aside.
I, I personally am not prepared to make that commitment here.
I'm just saying, I don't think your statement of, of they can't do it is, is not really true if there's a right of way there. So, and I think the other part of this is you need to have the town's traffic engineer, I assume it's still trans.
It is.
Look at how this should be done, because they're really the guys who tell you where traffic, you know, how traffic things should be done. Shouldn't be us, just five people who aren't traffic engineers trying to figure out where to put a crosswalk. Your traffic engineer figuring it out, so, um, where that happens, I think is up to them, but I don't. Saying that you can't do something across the road is not correct, from what I understand. And, and like I said, I know the town has had developers contribute money to work that they had done separately.
If we do not approve the modification, we will not have any sort of options for contingency for any alternate crosswalk situations.
Understood.
You can, we can punt this to, we can take, we can take a no vote on it and let town council decide.
You could, you could do that.
Can I interject? What, which house are, are you talking about across the street from Rod? Which, which, uh, street?
It's, if you can see the cursor, this one that I'm circling, there is no sidewalk around this corner.
Okay, um, I have some input on that. That side of Broad Meadow is being developed as we speak, um, and there will be sidewalks on that side of Broad Meadow. I, I assumed you guys, you guys realized that, I must have missed that earlier, but, uh, there, there are four lots going on the other side of Broad Meadow Drive adjacent to.
Well, that sure came in before I worked here.
I don't think it ever came in.
It came in before I was here too, and I've been.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it came in.
I, I have recorded plans in front of me, I, we're, I'm not developing it, but I'm aware of the development.
Who is the developer?
I don't have the name on, on top of, uh, in front of me, but, uh, what I.
Right on the drawings?
From, from Broad Meadow Drive, um, across the street, there will be sidewalks all the way across. That house should be soon to be, uh, demoed, and there'll be four lots on that side, so there will be sidewalks across.
Is it Greystone, Sandy asks?
Greystone, there you go.
Greystone?
And that one actually has been going for a bit, I see things occasionally with it on there. Executive developers.
Sandra, Sandra's correct, yep, that's correct.
I don't ever remember that coming into our planning commission. Of course, I've only been there for forty years, so who, whatever.
Yeah, if it, if it was, if it was subdivided, and it sounds like it would have to be one property to four, then that should have come through.
It should have, yes.
It was about a year ago.
County has four lots on its GIS.
Oh, so it's already four lots, okay.
Looks like six, ten A, one eighty-eight, one eighty-nine, one ninety.
Well, maybe that's why.
One is kind of at the north, parallel to the northern boundary of this place, by I guess a driveway up there. So it looks like it's been subdivided off. Whether that changes the means of, you know, that bad driveway at the corner.
Anybody still there? Okay. All right, uh, let's take a vote on this and be done with it. This would be a vote to waive the required sidewalk on the north side of Fassinger Lane. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi reluctantly.
Opposed? I'm opposed.
All right.
I'm opposed, but I have a question, is that a, a total waiver or a waiver? I guess, what, what is the north side of Fassinger Lane considered? Like, the thing that's on the screen right now, would that be?
That is their proposal. That is, that is what.
Part of the waiver?
Everything from where she just hit her cursor, all the way down to the bottom.
Essentially from Broad Meadow down to Rochester.
Well, yeah, to the, to the end of the property, right.
Yeah, and to the property.
For record keeping purposes, who was motion one and motion two?
Wait, what are we talking about now?
For modification number four, did we have someone officially make the motion?
Oh. Can we have somebody make the motion?
I'll make it, I, I don't think we did, but I'll make it.
Dan's number one.
Can we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Where's that, Lamar?
That was Lamar.
Thank you.
Let's do that again then, let's vote again. All in favor?
Let's, let's do a voice vote on this one, because we've got some dissenting, and I want to make sure we record it correctly.
All right.
Can I just ask a further question, not to beat this dead horse, because I'm all in favor of voting, but so this deals with the stormwater management basin property, which borders Broad Meadow and Fassinger. I'm not exactly sure where the difference between the two is. And I just want to make sure what part of this overall development the waiver is applying to versus not applying to.
Well, I think Rob stated that he wanted to go down to wherever trans authority said was the best crossing point on the road.
So perhaps Dan's motion text could be contingent upon review by traffic engineer for best recommendations?
Right.
Okay.
But just to be clear, I expect that it, and I agree that I don't know where Fassinger ends and Broad Meadow starts, but the, the Broad Meadow sidewalk will exist, and it will curve around for some distance, and I don't know what that is, traffic will decide, onto Fassinger before it crosses Fassinger. That may be ten feet, that may be twenty, fifty, a hundred feet, but it'll be a little bit of a curve onto Fassinger. So I don't want to be so specific that there is absolutely zero sidewalk on Fassinger.
Well, on that new drawing that they showed, um, that we didn't get, there was, the sidewalk was extended around and a crosswalk was shown going across. So that would be where they intend to put it, but we can, we can always modify that.
I didn't see that, so I don't know, but, and it may be appropriate if, if it's subject to traffic review.
Can you put that, um, C eight hundred back up on the screen, uh?
Mostly, I just want to make sure that the whole idea of a concept, south, broad view, doesn't get thrown out.
There you go, whoop, whoop, good, keep moving around.
Oh, it would appear that this is the proposed crosswalk, perhaps?
Okay.
Yes.
And my motion.
Right place or not.
Yeah, I don't know whether that's the right place or not, but my motion would approve that or, or ask for approval of that, subject to traffic review.
Right.
Okay.
And who seconded it?
More.
It was Lamar.
Lamar, okay. Let's, let's vote again, let's have a voice vote, uh, Rob?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Brendan?
Yes.
I voted no, okay. For anybody else?
All right, you're, you're my dissenter here.
I am your dissenter on this one.
So, four to one for this one, this is, this is rare, we're making history tonight.
Every so often.
So, we've made it through the modifications.
We want to. Are there any other comments on any parts of this plan?
I just have a question, is it a town road or is it gonna be private?
It will be dedicated to the township.
Okay.
You all right, Kim?
Yeah, thanks, we appreciate it, we'll be glad to maintain that for you.
It will be taken over by the town, um.
It seems to be last time, and I don't know what was resolved after this. There, I brought up the issue that there is, in lieu of a quote unquote recreational area, I hope I'm not wrong on my terminology, they were going to, the developer was going to kick in something which wasn't very much, sixty-eight hundred dollars, as I recall my math, which I said at the time was totally inadequate, and we would look at it further. But I don't know whatever became of that or what we should talk about.
Yeah, so this is something that's part of our development ordinance, um, the fee. And I, I just, I shut my zoning book so that I had more room on my desk here, and I shouldn't have done it, because I knew this is coming up. But I've, I've got it in here, so hold on, I'll read the section. The, the brief part that I can recall though is essentially the calculation for this recreation area, you can request that you do fee in lieu. It's kind of the same thing as this modification process, you all can make a recommendation if you have a concern or don't. Um, oh, look at that, I turned right to it, um, but council makes the final approval. The fee is to be determined in the amount of four hundred dollars per dwelling unit after careful review of section five oh three subsection eleven of the P A Municipalities Planning Code, North Pittsburgh Community Development Corporation Recreation Plan, Town Master Plan in nineteen ninety, Town Municipal Budget, and Five Year Capital Program. So that is how we by ordinance set that fee.
Okay, and, and simple math says four hundred times seventeen lots is sixty-eight hundred dollars. And that won't do much, and so I don't see the point of it. And given that there has been a tremendous savings on the north side of Fassinger sidewalk, I think that the sixty-eight hundred dollars is inadequate and should be increased so that you can, this would have some money to do something with.
Okay, I do not think that we have the ability under our zoning ordinance to increase the assessment of the fee.
Well, we certainly ought to look at that.
Yes, I am in support of that.
Because that amount, sixty-eight hundred dollars doesn't, doesn't cover bird feed.
Sure, I mean, again, that's right here, based on the nineteen ninety Town Municipal Budget. So that means the last time that we looked at that, I was going to be born in seven months. Um, I would encourage us to do that when we have a comprehensive. Um, I would encourage us to do that when we have a comprehensive review of our design standards and zoning.
I, I trust what you're saying, RJ. I would just double check and make sure we don't have the discretion to substitute another number for that.
For sure. Of course, we could just require the recreational area. We could. And then we'd need to go into, you know, they'd have to come back with a, with a new plan for that. But that is an option.
On a different subject? I'd like to see a landscaping plan of that detention pond area. I'm curious how they're going to approach that.
As of now, there's going to be none.
Well, there.
Changes their mind.
I, I, I think if they think about it, they're going to want to do some, but I'm curious what they would do. So if you would put that in as a recommendation, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, the, and I'm going to send you a microquest, just in case you have anything to add. The changes to any landscaping in the detention pond area were made based on the recommendation of our stormwater engineers review.
Well, they don't have any landscaping plan, do they?
No, they took it off. They used to have something, Ted, and PV told them they didn't want anything on there.
Right.
They didn't want vegetation, according to their engineer or their landscape people.
The town, that's the town stormwater engineer, PV.
That's correct.
Hold on, landscape off of the pond. RJ, am I?
You're, you got it, Rob.
Okay. It's not.
I think, I thought, didn't they just say they wanted, they didn't want anything right at the top crest of the?
You got to read PV's stuff, Ted. I don't know what it said exactly.
I don't know what it says.
The letters should be included in your packet for this meeting, if you were able to access the Dropbox. It's number six, I believe.
Okay. All right. Are we ready then to make a, a motion to approve this?
I guess.
Is there any, is there any, is there any, um, uh, inclination to table it?
I'm good.
Okay. All right.
We've got Dan for a number one. Who's our number two?
Somebody want to second that?
I'll second.
These are all subject to their, to the previous motions.
Yes.
Yes. It, it was, the approval was last because they would have had to come back with a new plan if they did not get those modifications.
Okay. So can I call for a vote then? Did we, do we have a second?
We do.
Yes. Brendan?
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay. All right, I guess that's unanimous.
At 5:00, that is going to be going to the council for a first review and discussion um, on Monday's upcoming meeting, uh, and the plan is, between the town manager and I, we will suggest the council potentially take action at their following meeting, the second meeting in the month of August.
Okay. Okay, do we have any minutes to approve?
I believe there should be some from July.
RJ, you good with us?
Yes, you guys are good to go. Thank you very much.
Hey, thanks, everybody. Thanks for your time tonight.
Good night.
Good night.
RJ, will you stick around?
While, while we've still got him on here, I think he's still on here. Mr. Albright, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
For coming to your first official planning commission meeting. Really appreciate, uh, your advice while you've been here and, um, stuff I had of the group, the plan is we're going to have engineer representation anytime that we have a development review, um, because while I have lots of nice thoughts about land development, I'm not an engineer. So it's nice to have someone here that we can, we can call on, so.
Happy to be here.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, good night, everyone.
Can you, can you get us back to where we can see each other?
Yes, I can.
There we go. Okay. All those beautiful faces, you know? Okay, uh, we have minutes to approve.
Yes.
Are there any changes to the minutes?
All the revisions suggested.
Okay, can I have a motion then to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
The second? Somebody?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Lamar. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
I abstained, because I wasn't, I got abstained. I wasn't there.
Or, and Rob abstained. Okay.
There is a note on our, um, agenda for public comment.
I don't believe there's anyone else here other than us. I just want to make a, a couple quick notes for the good of the group before we wrap up. Um, one is an update on the zoning ordinances that had moved through the planning commission um, review process previously. Of course, there's the animal ordinance, and there's the small wireless facilities, AKA 5G. Um, there have been no material changes the last time that you all saw them, so the public hearings for those are going to be coming up. Um, 5G potentially at August 24th. Depending on, you know, how, how we go about with the dogs and the chickens, and if we keep them in the same ordinance or decide that they might be better served to be split, you know, at this point, no changes to the text, because that's something that we might throw out there, just because there's been a little bit of chicken chatter that I, I was not anticipating, um, when we were at this, at this point, but no material changes, public hearings are coming up on those imminently. Um, we do also have, coming down the pipeline for you all, uh, there is a dialysis clinic uh, land development application that we have just received. Um, they've just got to get to me this last piece where they appropriately show the sidewalks for the RC District, it's right by the Howard Hanna. Um, if you are familiar with that, with that area, you know, and we probably are, it's not that far from Sheets. We all know where that is. But, um, so once they get me one more revision where they show the pedestrian sidewalks, their application will be administratively complete, we'll start the review process unless anyone has any concerns, and they might be ready to be reviewed by.
Is that, is that the Ted Dixon property?
That sounds awful familiar, but I would have to look. It's, it's like a couple, a couple residential parcels north of the Howard Hanna that they're planning on. Yep, so that's coming down the pipeline.
Okay.
Hey, quick question, RJ. We, we've been through the proposal for a dental clinic or some such thing at the intersection of Cumberland and Perry Highway, right, right over the hill from the that building now has a for sale sign for lease. Did the old buyer?
North American Dental, is that what you're thinking of?
Yes, did they give up on that?
They achieved the non-conforming use variance, and I believe two days later informed me that they were pulling the plan and did not uh, intend to continue with the land development.
Okay, because there's a new for sale sign on that building.
Yes. Uh, that is not going forward as, as of the last communication I had with them.
Did they give any reasons?
Uh, you know, I mean, it's hard to say. I, I know that, uh, there are a lot of companies that are reconsidering their strategy, given the state of the world right now, but, but they didn't really elaborate.
Okay. Anything else for, for anybody?
RJ, has, has anyone come up with anything for the property in front of the senior center, senior place on Blazer Drive where they were supposed to put the commercial?
Yeah, they're, they're in sort of what I'll call the very primordial state of trying to scope out what they're thinking there. Um, I would say within the next couple of months, just depending on how things go on, on their side, uh, we, we might have a land development application that would be ready to, to have some metal and then come to you guys.
Okay, I saw they were going, going hot and heavy on the site development there, so I would think they'd come together here in the near future.
Fingers crossed, the little tidbits that I've seen look like we might get some fun stuff if, if everything goes according to plan, but, um, you know, what, we don't, we, I haven't seen any true renderings or for sure tenants or anything.
Still moving, because I was afraid it was going to be the same way. They were going to say like, uh.
Right, right. No, no, we, we, I just heard from, um, the developer. Oh, geez, it was you know, time dilation is funny during COVID world, but it was either the week before last or last week.
Okay. All right, so that's good to hear. They're still going ahead, so great.
Anything else?
Nope.
Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn. Yeah, we all moved to adjourn.
Okay.
All right, we got Dan one, who wants to be number two.
We'll put Rob at number two.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.